One, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, March 22, 2022, and I'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Galt, Commissioner Ges.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Bray. Present. And Commissioner Ges is going to give our invocation and will remain standing for the national.
Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for the life you've given us. Thank you for our city and prepare our hearts tonight. Just, um, just give us the wisdom, the insight, just to make the best decisions for everyone in the city. We love you and thank you for all that you do, Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, with that, we'll get, we have some new employee introductions, and I'll ask Chief Lehrer to come up.
Good evening, mayor, commissioner, city manager, and city clerk. Pleased to introduce two of our most recent hires at the 911 Center. They were hired as telecommunications. The first is McKenzie Dennis. She goes by Kenzie. She's originally from Marion, Kentucky, graduate of Livingston County High School. She currently lives in Grand Rivers with her fiance, their dog Nellie, and she's planning on getting married later on this year. So she's been with us for just about six weeks.
Something along that way.
Yep, about six weeks. Next, we have Kobe Fawver. He was recently hired as well. He was born and raised in California for about 10 years before moving to Southern Illinois. After that, he worked as a dispatcher and a jailer in North Dakota for about two years before moving to Kentucky and is going to work at our 911 Center. He enjoys the field of law enforcement as well as playing ultimate frisbee, and we won't hold this against him, but he enjoys watching the Chicago Cubs.
Yes, we will hold that against him.
Just don't let him get talking about Chicago with Cherry.
With Greg Cherry, oh my gosh, okay. Welcome. Thank you very much. We look forward to having you on here with the city, and we know you'll do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, one of my favorite things to do, we have a proclamation. This is proclamation for Mary Yiser Month. This is the 65th anniversary of the Yiser Art Center, and we've got Lexi Melikan, the executive director.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you too.
Who you got with you there?
This is Todd Nieske. She's on our board of directors. She's a painting instructor at Paducah.
Oh, are you really? Okay. Okay. So we have a proclamation, and I'll read it. It's, whereas in 1957, Mary Yiser and fellow artists formed the Paducah Art Guild, a nonprofit center to promote the creation and appreciation of visual arts. And whereas, to honor its founder, Mary Yiser, the Paducah Art Guild changed its name in 1990 to Yiser Art Center. And whereas, Mary Yiser pursued art studies throughout her life by studying at the Chicago Academy of Fine Arts, the University of Kentucky, and various academies in Europe. And whereas, Mary Yiser taught at Paducah Junior College from 1940 to 1942, and from 1953 to 1971, with the goal of sharing her love of tapestries, texture, and all visual arts. And whereas, to honor Mary Yiser's appreciation of the arts, mission of the Yiser Art Center is to further the development and appreciation of the visual arts within our local community and throughout the region by providing educational opportunities and activities that help nurture creative spirit. And whereas, this year, Yiser Art Center, which has been housed in its market house location since March 4, 1963, is celebrating its 65th anniversary. Now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor Paducah, Kentucky, hereby declare the month of March 2022 as Mary Yiser Month.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda now. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval. Would any commissioner like an item removed for separate discussion? Okay, so I'll ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the March 8, 2022 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting, received involved documents, reappointment of Mark Connect and Mark Kettler to the Paducah Golf Commission, said term shall expire March 26, 2026. Reappointment of Stephen Page and Cindy Ragland to the Creative and Cultural Council, said term shall expire March 24, 2025. Personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing an application for a 2022 Firehouse Public Safety Foundation grant for the purchase of an ATV vehicle for the Paducah Fire Department in the amount of $25,000, accepting any grant funds awarded by Firehouse Public Safety Foundation and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing an application for an American Association of Retired Persons, AARP, Community Challenge Grant in the amount of $50,000 to assist in the building of a pickleball court at Noble Park, accepting any grant funds awarded by AARP and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to obtain a Crum Rubber Grant in the amount of $29,000 from the Kentucky Department of Environmental Protection for a Port-in-Place Playground and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing an application for a T-Mobile Hometown Grant in the amount of $50,000 for the Langstaff Park Revitalization, accepting any grant funds awarded by T-Mobile and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. Municipal order authorizing the city of Paducah to use the standard allowance for the local fiscal recovery fund as authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act.
Still moved? Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Ges.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. Okay, the next is a resolution to approve support for a RACE grant application for Friendship Road. And we have someone here representing the office of the Kentucky State Highway District. I'll try to explain this because the folks visited me in my office a couple of weeks ago, actually, and the Friendship Road project, widening project, is a four-phase project. The first phase has already been budgeted, and the money has been set aside. And so the plans have been well on their way to get started with Phase One. But because of the infrastructure bill and a lot of things going on with the federal, with the economy, and with the feds, there appeared to be an opportunity to accelerate the entire project and possibly get all of the money all at one time so that we could do the entire project. What the state of Kentucky needed from the city and the county was a pledge of $50,000 to apply for a RACE grant, which amounts to a commitment on the part of the city of $10,000 a year for five years. So I gave my verbal support at the time when the state representatives were here, but we, of course, need to talk about it and pass a resolution and make sure that everybody's understanding it seemed like a small amount, you know, to get, I think the total of the project was 30 million is, did I?
Yeah, it's about 35 million.
You want to come up and make, sorry, did I botch that too bad? Did I?
You did very good, very well. I'm Chris Coons. I'm with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, work at our office in Reedland, and I'm our project manager for the project. And as Mayor Bray said, the infrastructure bill has, you know, I'm sure everybody saw, you know, it's a $2 billion infrastructure program, but those are all broken up into grant programs that you have to apply for, similar to, I guess you guys did a build grant for your Riverport project a couple of years ago. So the RACE grant is one of those categories in the infrastructure bill. And after looking at a bunch of projects statewide, we've tried to narrow down projects that we think fit in each grant category. And based on the criteria for the RACE grant, we think the Friendship Road would be a very good candidate for the project, or good candidate for that pot of grant funds. And so we plan on, in conjunction with the city and the county, applying for a RACE grant that, as Mayor Bray said, would fund the entire project at one time rather than having to piecemeal it through the six-year plan process over the next who knows how many years. One of the big, you know, scoring categories for the RACE grant is local support, and a local financial commitment really helps raise the profile of the project and increase the chances that it would get selected. So that's why we've come to the city and the county, asking for them to put a financial commitment forward that, you know, we would be able to include in our application packet to help with, hopefully, you know, winning the project, the project winning the grant.
You explained it a lot better than I made.
You say you did a good job.
Questions from anybody? The county's already, I think you've already been on the fiscal court meeting.
Yeah, we went to the fiscal court meeting.
They've already approved it. It's a community-wide thing. I think the widening of Friendship Road is a needed project.
The county will actually, is going to be the one to apply for it through grants.gov, but it'll be a combined application between the county, the city, and the state. You know, it scores higher to have the local agency be the applicant, and McCracken County has not applied for one in a long time. It's not won one in a long time, so we think, we're trying to position to get our best chance of win, and we think that having the county be the actual one to put in the grant application is our best chance, but it's going to be written up as a combined application between all three entities.
Makes perfect sense.
Chris, when I was talking to Kyle, and correct me if I'm misremembering this, the anticipation award announcements would be this late summer, early fall?
Yes, I think September is the timeframe. And as the mayor said, the first section that's between 45 and 62, we're buying property on that right now, and it's going to be ready to go to construction this fall anyway. So if we don't win the grant application, we still plan on moving forward with that first section this fall. So if we do win the grant application, that would allow us to do the whole thing all the way, you know, all of it charged in US 60, you know, the whole corridor, all at one time.
I think it's a small price to pay, honestly. I think it's a very small match to have to do, and I appreciate that state taking the lead and putting, and I understand we were selected by the state, this project was, as you said, is a good candidate. So I think absolutely we should do everything we can. And I talked to Kyle myself and.
Yeah, I was going to actually ask you that. One thing that we will need with the grant application also is, you know, getting letters of support from local businesses, school, fire, police, all those types of entities. So, you know, we would be looking to someone from the city, you know, to help us with procuring all of those.
We'll do that. No problem.
Terrific.
Okay, I think that's, I think I would, okay, do you need to read the, read the resolution, please?
A proposed.
I was ready to vote.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Related to the U.S. Department of Transportation: Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, RACE Discretionary Grant Program and Friendship Road Kentucky 1286 Project."
So move.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Ges.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. If at some point, after you do whatever paperwork needed, if you could send me a copy of that resolution so we can include it in the application packet.
We'll do it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got a couple of municipal orders, and the first one, I'll invite Assistant City Manager Michelle Smolin to come up and tell us about the commission priorities. We're going to adopt our commission priorities for this year. And just to review, we all got together the first weekend in February, late Friday afternoon, Saturday morning, talked through our commission priorities for 2022, and this is the official adoption. So we're going live with these priorities tonight. So Michelle, tell us, you've been wordsmithing them.
That's right. Thank you for that introduction, Mayor Bray. And yes, we have been wordsmithing them and spending time because this is so important to us. It's a really important tool that helps staff stay aligned with the board of what you all want to accomplish, and it also helps us communicate out to our community members in addition to just our daily services, what priorities we're working on. So this is a very important tool that we use, as I mentioned, to really stay aligned with what the board wants to do this year. So it's, after that commission priority setting retreat, we have come up with 10 priorities, and the structure is very similar to how it has been in the past, where we have the priority action items, or the priority, the objective, the action item, and key staff members. We're not going to go through all of that today. It's in the packet, and it will be available online as it has been in the past. So we're just going to focus on, at a very high level, on the 10 priority items, and you all are welcome to jump in with any particular item you'd like to talk about.
Great, thank you.
So first off, this is a continuation from our previous commission priorities with the 911 radio tower upgrades and operational funding, and this is really focused right now on supporting that joint city-county committee with their recommendations for capital improvements, governance, and revenue source. Okay. Next, we have beautification, and this is really aimed at focusing on city services that enhance our, kind of the look of our community. And a good example that's in here is promoting our Tyler 311 app because we can actually have residents submit things they see in parks or brush pickup. So this is really focused on beautification of our community.
Yeah, so this is a new one for this year. You know, we all agreed on it, but it's got lots of tentacles, you know, lots of ways that, you know, that we can support beautification. Actually, I was talking with Pam Spencer this afternoon, and one of the things I really didn't know, but anybody can donate private funds to the city for projects and take a tax deduction. And I just was not aware of that, but I think, you know, this could be a vehicle if there's people out in the community that have, you know, special priorities or things that, you know, they'd like to see get done, you know, in the beautification area. The beautification committee actually could pick out some projects to focus on, and we could get donations from the community. So there's a good vehicle here to fund some initiatives, and I think there's nobody that would be against, that I'm aware of, you know, making our community more beautiful, no matter where it was. So I'm looking forward to working on this initiative.
I'd like to say, I don't want to get in the weeds about it, but you know, when you and I were in another city, that community had raised a lot of money just to beautify their city through their signage.
Yeah.
Just coming in to, in each entrance off the interstate, and I just do hope that our signage, I'm not talking about us having a capital fund or anything to do that, but they all need some work.
Yeah, well, actually, that particular city, you know, raised seven figures.
Yes.
You know, to redo a very attractive entrance, you know, off of the interstate.
At multiple locations, so yeah. Anyway, our signs need, just need some fluffing. They need some work.
We do. We need somebody to lead that project, you know, so that's, and I'm hoping that our beautification, you know, board will step up and do that, help us do that, so.
That's great. Okay. Next, we have community growth, and this is really focused on working with the county and investing time and resources that help our community grow and enhance, really focus on enhancement on our community.
Yeah, that's got multiple prongs.
Yes.
We, one of the things that we have coming up is that we have a, what's it called?
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan. So the city and county both, every five years have to file a comprehensive plan with the state of Kentucky. And one of the things that Judge Kleimer and I have agreed on this year is that we'll do that together. So that really, I mean, it's just what it says. It's a comprehensive plan to look at where the city and county are going to grow, how we're going to grow, what areas we're going to grow, and kind of the way we work together to accomplish that. So community growth is very important for all of us, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Next, we have continuing efforts to improve operational efficiencies. So this is really looking at our internal processes and making sure that we're running as efficient as possible. It can include things like our construction development process, just different, really even cross-departmental processes that we have.
So we had a meeting yesterday afternoon, actually, Commissioner Ges and I did, with the inspection department. You know, just really trying to unpack and understand the processes that they go through, you know, their puts and takes. It was a very eye-opening meeting, I thought, and I think you did as well, where you better understand, you know, how they go about things, why they go about things, the things that they're doing over and above really what they really are called to do, you know, as well as some of the challenges that they have, you know, in following Kentucky State Building Code.
Sure.
So it was, like I said, it was very eye-opening, and I think one of the things we decided at the end was that if we could get a better feel for a lot of departments, you know, the way they operate, you know, that we'd all be better off. So, you know, maybe it's some, maybe that is part of that process, you know, we could assign different departments, you know, some of the commissioners, and really take more of a deep dive, you know, some of those. So, but it was very, it was an excellent meeting, so.
Great.
Questions, thoughts? Everybody okay? Okay.
So next, we have downtown, and this is a continuation from the previous commission priority, and so this is really that concentrated effort to support our downtown with city block and our merchants that are already in the downtown area, so.
So I'm the only one talking here?
Do you want us to?
You know, I had a meeting with the Main Street merchants a couple of weeks ago because I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to listen, and I wanted to hear, you know, what was on their mind. And of course, the thing that's on everybody's mind downtown is the city block project. How's it going to affect me? How's it going to affect parking? You know, how are we going to, how are we going to work through all those issues? It was, I thought it was a good meeting. I think we had a lot of good dialogue. I certainly got called on the carpet plenty, you know, to talk about, you know, the project and the plans that the city is putting forth, but it's clear, you know, that everybody is interested in downtown, just like we're interested in downtown, to make sure that it grows. So we're going to go through some transition here over the next 24 months, and the health of our merchants downtown is critical, you know, as we go through this transition. And, you know, and I wanted to demonstrate, you know, that that was important to the city. I think we had a good meeting, but we've got a lot of follow-up, a lot of things that we have to do to make sure that we can try to accomplish some of our goals down there because we are, we are going to go through some transition, so.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say about that.
There'll be a lot of activity. We talked about it.
Today.
I guess the last meeting on the RACE, the build grant, and there's going to be a lot of construction, a lot of activity going on, but I just said, if you're not doing anything, you're not doing anything. So we're going to have a lot going on, and I think that's exciting, but I think that's important, and I know, Derek, practically every Monday when I'm talking to them, I'm saying, what are we doing to help the local businesses so that they have plenty of access, and there's plenty of parking, and events, and all of that that will keep them busy during that time and keep people coming down?
And actually, you know, at the luncheon today, downtown was brought up by some of our young people, you know, with the chamber hosted their youth leadership and their current leadership program with the chamber board, and that was a common thread, I think, that came out of almost every, no matter what question they were answering, came out, especially from the youth, about the downtown and exploring and making it even more than where it is, but that it was a jewel in a gem, and people realized that.
You know, I had dinner last night talking about downtown. I had somebody reached out to me, a couple was looking at relocating to Paducah, and they spent all day yesterday, today's Tuesday, all day yesterday looking at buildings on Broadway or in, on Broadway or very close to Broadway. And they just, they were looking around, and they found Paducah, and they fell in love with it, and they just, you know, so they haven't bought a building yet, but they're very interested in developing a building, thinking about what kind of needs.
ago because I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to listen and I wanted to hear, you know, what was on their mind. And, and of course, the thing that's on everybody's mind downtown is the City Block project. How's it going to affect me? You know, how's it going to affect parking? You know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna work through all those issues? It was, I thought it was a good meeting. I think we had a lot of good dialogue. I certainly got called on the carpet plenty, you know, to talk about, you know, the project and the plans that the city is putting forth. But it's clear, you know, that, that everybody is, is interested in, in downtown, just like we're interested in downtown, to make sure that it grows. So we're going to go through some transition here over the next 24 months. And the health of our merchants downtown is critical, you know, as we go through this transition. And, you know, and I wanted to demonstrate, you know, that, that, that was important to the city. I think we had a good meeting, but we've got a lot of follow-up, a lot of things that we have to do to make sure that we can try to accomplish some of our goals down there because we are, we are going to go through some transition, so.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say about that.
There'll be a lot of activity. We talked about it.
Today.
I guess the last meeting on the raise, the build grant. And there's going to be a lot of construction, a lot of activity going on, but I just said, if you're not doing anything, you're not doing anything. So we're going to have a lot going on, and I think that's exciting. But I think that's important, and I know, Derek, practically every Monday when I'm talking to them, I'm saying, what are we doing to help the local businesses so that they have plenty of access and there's plenty of parking and events and all of that that will keep them busy during that time and keep people coming down.
And, and actually, you know, at the luncheon today, downtown was brought up by some of our young people, you know, with the, the chamber hosted their youth leadership and their current leadership program with the chamber board. And, and that was a common thread, I think, that came out of almost every, no matter what question they were answering, came out, especially from the youth, about, about the downtown and exploring and making it even more than where it is, but that it was a jewel in a gem, and people realized that.
You know, I had dinner last night talking about downtown. I had somebody reached out to me, a couple was looking at relocating to Paducah, and they, they spent all day yesterday, today's Tuesday, all day yesterday looking at buildings on Broadway or in, on Broadway or very close to Broadway. And they just, they were looking around and they found Paducah and they fell in love with it and they just, you know, so they haven't bought a building yet, but they're very interested in developing a building, thinking about what, what kind of needs downtown has. So it's, it's very exciting to see that kind of folks from outside the community just like, just jump in and someplace you lived all your life. And I mean, they spent three days here and all they did was talk about downtown and how, how great it was. And so it was very exciting to me, so.
Yeah, it's very special.
Downtown's very important to us.
Mayor, with your, with your meeting that you had with the merchants yesterday, did you get a sense that they are becoming a little more comfortable with what's about to happen?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a good way to describe it. I think they're, they're realist, they know the project's going to happen now, and I think they're, they've turned their, their minds to, you know, how am I going to prosper? You know, I think there's a discussion about a shuttle service, a parking shuttle service. I know, I know a couple of people are talking about partnering on that. I know there's some folks talking about a valet parking service. So I think, you know, it, it was really good. I mean, I think, I think people, there was not any, I mean, people weren't down or anything, you know, people were, you know, glad to hear, you know, they wanted to hear what we were, what we were going to do, but I don't, it was, it was a really positive meeting.
Next, we have housing, which is also a continuation from last year's commission priorities. And this is really the continued investment in our housing stock at all levels of pricing, working with developers, looking at infill incentives. So we'll continue that work that we started last year. Following that, we have minority inclusion. Oh, go ahead, yes.
Sorry, I'm going to have to jump in on this one.
Please, jump in, yeah.
Because I attended the Northside meeting.
Oh, yeah.
This past week, and that was interesting because, you know, that's, I don't want to botch this, but, but that neighborhood's going to be on, it's going to be historical. It's going to be designated as a historical neighborhood, which is going to qualify for tax credits, federal and state tax credits. Now, it depends on whether it's a commercial or residential development, but one of the things that was clear from the meeting, you know, as an outcome, was that, you know, the threshold for a lot of folks and residents is they have to spend $20,000 to qualify. And there was, you know, some feedback from residents that, you know, there was going to be people that weren't going to be able to meet that $20,000 threshold, which I think makes it incumbent on the city to think about, you know, how we can incentivize people to fix up their homes at a level below that in some way, shape, or form. We've, we're doing that, the Midtown Alliance or the Paducah.
Paducah Alliance, yeah.
They, they have a program where they help folks. I know that, I know that some cities are incentivizing that themselves, and I think that as we go along, that's something we're going to have to look at. We're going to have to throw some, we're going to have to throw some money and investment in there. We need somebody to help us figure out how to do that. I think it could be complimentary, you know, to the program that we got with the Northside. But, but that's something that, that the city's going to have to invest in.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure we figured out exactly how to do that, but I, I think we have to, we have to figure that out going forward, so. You were the, you were at the meeting, right? Any thought, any comments?
You know, that was the negative part in it. Some of them didn't know if they could reach the minimum, but I thought they were enthusiastic that, you know, I mean, people recognized them.
Right.
And then, as a follow-up to that meeting last night, the HARC met and approved that moving forward to the state, and so that process continues. And there was some good feedback last night also on, on one of the property. They're going to go back and revisit that. And I know that Josh is involved with that discussion also. But I've, over the course of, of my career in public service, I've had the opportunity to attend several of those type meetings, and that is the largest turnout that, usually it's like 10 or 12 people that show up for those meetings, and I think there was, you know, 50, 50-plus in there, so.
Oh, ever been there.
Engagement is good.
Yep, yep.
I mean, you know, and I mean, whether it's positive or even, even negative, but, you know, I mean, we need to, we need to know what, we need to know what folks are thinking.
Right.
And, you know, I ran into Chris Black today, and he was, he was talking about some property that he thought was right there on Park Avenue that should have been included. Was that part of, did that come up in discussion? You know, I'm not sure, but.
It, it did after the meeting. I know that we were talking last Monday after, after the meeting with, with Chris and some of those thoughts.
So.
Just to add, it may be a second round of the nomination.
Okay, okay. Anyway, you know, the moral of the story, I think, is engagement's good.
Yeah.
You know, we get our neighbors out there talking, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Sorry to interrupt.
No, please. So next, we have minority inclusion. This is a continuation of last year's priority, and we really talked about leading by example with citywide and departmental inclusion strategies on employment, boards, and committees. And really, we're hoping to springboard off of the D and I training that all employees and the board just went through and figure out, you know, next steps on this one.
So when we went over these last week before this meeting, one of the things that we talked about under this particular initiative, you know, was that, you know, we just went through diversity and inclusion training here.
Yes.
And I know that there are some, I think the larger the company out there, the, probably the more sophisticated the diversity and equity and inclusion training that exists out there. And one of the things I think we want to do is, we do want to lead by example in this, in this particular area. And so if we can learn from any of those partners that we have, any of those companies in the community, what they're doing. We talked about partnering with them in, in some form or fashion. We have the two hospitals that have many employees, and they, they both, I know, are involved in that training.
Yeah.
So we wanted, we wanted to learn from, learn from them and partner with them if we could.
Yes.
And I think the diversity and equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion training that we went through is really just the beginning.
Yes.
I mean, it was just the first, the first step. So we have, we have more work to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any thoughts, anybody?
Well, I think you're absolutely correct. Just what we did last week or the week before last, I think Ms. Wazo and her team did an excellent job at putting that training together. And so I do look forward to seeing what we're going to do in the days ahead because just that one training.
Right.
That we had is certainly not going to do it, and just one training per year, probably won't do it. But I think that the city certainly needs to be, be leader in that, in that priority. So I'm looking forward to seeing what's coming next.
I think about what we worked on this last year, you know, one of, in, in terms of hiring, I know that, that you in particular got involved, you know, with, you know, hiring candidates, trying to bubble up candidates, you know, for, for firing police. I know that I've made a concentrated effort in terms of board appointments. You and I have worked together on that. We have more work to do.
Yeah.
But I think we've made, we've made a good effort up to this point. We just, there's just lots of more work to do.
And I think people, though they know it's not going to happen overnight, people are excited that we've made a move.
Okay.
That we're, as Commissioner Gold would say, that we're no longer just kicking the can. We're going somewhere with it, so.
She'll appreciate that you quoted her.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great feedback. So the next is a new item. It's called protecting key historical and cultural resources. So this is really collaborating with our community partners to figure out where we can support and invest in those cultural resources that are unique to Paducah. You know, one example is the Civic Center, which is on the agenda later. So this is a new one that we'll be focusing on this year.
You want to jump in on this one?
Go ahead. Not back yet.
So we have, we have historical and cultural resources in the community that we don't, you know, we don't want to go away. But, but there's, there's always more things to do than there're money, than there is money for.
That's right, yeah.
And we've got the Columbia Theater as an example, sitting there on Broadway. That's a, you know, that's a historical site. It's got a lot of beauty on the inside, but it's a significant cost. And so, you know, how, where do we get those funds? How do we allocate those funds? How, once we do allocate those funds, how, what's going to happen?
Yeah.
You know, to the structure. Hotel Metropolitan is one. I'm, I'm just calling out a couple.
Yeah.
There's, you know, there's, these, these opportunities arise from time to time, and I think what the commission decided to do was to make that a priority so we can, we could try to, you know, wrestle some of these to the mat and figure out what we were going to do about them. Anything to add?
Well, you know, you and I met with Brent Legs, who's from Paducah, and he's with National Organization Historical, anyway, he has, he runs over a grant fund that has, what, over $50 million in it. The Hotel Metropolitan's already gotten one from him. And we talked to him about helping us to identify some of the locations that we may want to really focus on, just like we want to be intentional on some, on, you know, minority inclusion. I do believe there are some historical and cultural treasures in our community that we're going to have to be intentional on protecting and preserving. So I, I'm glad we've added that. They're just some treasures that we really can't let go by the wayside, just let them be neglected. I appreciate, you know, some of them have a lot of volunteers working on them, and I appreciate that because if we didn't have that, they wouldn't be as far along as they are. But I think they're, all of them are reaching some points that the city needs to offer some assistance in some way.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
The next is Southside Enhancements, which is, of course, is a continuation from the current commission priorities. And this is really that targeted empowerment engagement with Southside neighborhoods and the business community. And, you know, what we've, we've talked about is starting on the Walter Jeteran area, since we have the Dunlap Apartments starting there, and also really supporting that Southside Steering Committee and figuring out those policy initiatives.
Yeah, this is, this is a big initiative, and it's, it's a long-term initiative, and it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of follow-through, a lot of work. So we've got, we've got our committee established. So we need to, we need, as you point out, we need to support that committee, and then we need to figure out what, what the next steps are. I think, I think our plan really is to start around the Jeteran Schoolhouse project. I think we've, we've concluded that in terms of the South Side, you know, that that could be, that could be a cornerstone project and could certainly help the neighborhood.
Yeah.
As the construction goes on. But at the same time, there's a, we've got a big, we've got a big commercial community in the South Side that, you know, that, that needs, needs support.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've got people that, that want access to commercial activity on that side of town that's, that's not available currently. So there's, there's lots of arms and legs to this project.
Yes.
And, and so the work that that committee is doing is going to be important.
I, I really feel like we need a strategic plan on what the next steps are.
For the South Side?
Yes. I mean, I know we've talked about the Jeteran and the Dunlap. That kind of helps launch that, the, some housing, and there's some other development that, you know, could happen around there, that there's interest on that. And we have some great businesses on the South Side, locally owned and chains, but I think there's some potential there. If we helped give some developers direction or help them, you know, put some properties together, I think it would make a difference. I, I've had them say to me, if we had some ideas and some help, you know, some strategic plan on it. So I just think we, we don't need to just be focused in one area. We could be on two, but we need a strategic plan on how we're going to move forward with it.
And that's part of the work that the planning department is, is working on with that. And Nick's actually at the Southside Steering Committee meeting tonight, as they, they landed on, tonight, of all night to meet, to be able to get all of them there for the first one, and we, but that's where he is tonight.
It's good, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
So they're, they're actually meeting on that to help us develop that.
Good. Let's give them all the help they need.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything they need.
Yep.
I think, just with the minority inclusion, I think that people understand that, you know, the way things are now didn't get there overnight, and they understand that it is going to take some, a time to kind of begin to see some progress. But by the same token, they are appreciative of the fact that it's getting some attention. And I think, and so, and as Commissioner Wilson has said, we need to give everybody, whoever's working over there, everything that they need so that they can be successful. Even some of the steering committee members, I have had opportunity to talk to some by accident, not by design, but by accident. And they've been out on their own, driving around, looking around the South Side, coming up with ideas and, but not. So I think, I think that we're going to see, perhaps tonight and the days ahead, we're going to see some exciting stuff emerging from those.
Yeah, that's real healthy, and I think, you know, most of the folks that I've talked, talked to about the South Side, they always are very appreciative, you know, of the attention that we've given it up to this point. But I think they also know that it's a long-term, you know, that there's no, no magic bullet, no secret fix.
Right.
Quick fix, so.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
And finally, we have trails and bike path enhancements. And this will really be focused on utilizing community feedback to figure out what is the next phase of the Greenway Trail and looking for potential opportunities for bike lanes.
So we want to have a town hall.
That's great.
You know, at some point in time and, and get, we, we want to make sure we get community feedback.
Yeah.
This is, this is a big one. I, I mean, this is, you know, we, we need to, we need to focus. It's going to cost money. But I do, I'll just say this, a walkable city with good bike paths is very attractive to people. I mean, it's one of the things that people, when they move into a community or they visit a community they've never seen before, it, it, it puts off a very positive aura, you know, for our community.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think it's something that's definitely worth us spending some focus on and exploring what the opportunities are. I don't know if it's, it's grants or.
Yes.
I know the, I know the Greenway Trail itself, it's like, it seems like, I don't know exactly what we've spent on it, but it seems like it's a million dollars for every 50 feet or something, you know? It seems, I know that's, I know that's.
It's an exaggeration, a little bit.
Exaggerate.
Just a little bit.
But it's expensive.
Yes, yes, it is.
You know, it's expensive the way we've, we've gone about it. And, and I just wonder if there's opportunities for bike trails in other parts of the city that are not necessarily, you know, configured like that. So, so we just, just like anything else, if we're going to get anything done with it, we've got to, we've got to start exploring it.
And we have been successful in getting grants in the past, so that is part of this, is making sure that we're exploring all the grants opportunities for that Greenwell, Greenway Trail expansion.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And also, this is a great avenue for mayor, which you were talking about earlier in relationship to community partners, you know, to, if they've got an idea or done it that they can donate into, you know, for that, for, you know, even if it's for benches or things like that along, you know, so we have that, that vehicle there where this is a great, as we expand upon that, would be great for public-private partnerships.
For sure, for sure.
So those are the 10 commission priorities. I did want to highlight, we have three continuous improvement items. One is stormwater. We, you know, the board has designated. We, you know, the Board has designated the ARPA money for Stormwater. We have two projects ongoing right now that Rick is, Rick's team has been working on. The leadership team talked a lot about our city facilities needs, so we will be working on that. And then, of course, the Joint City-County Sportsplex. So, these are three continuous improvement items. We won't necessarily utilize the same type of reporting like we do for the Commission priorities, but did want to recognize that they're important and will be a continued focus, you know, for our team.
Yeah, they, they, they're not on the list of the priorities for this year, but they're, they're like ongoing priorities. I mean, that, that's probably the best way to, to say it. I mean, you know, the city and county between us are going to spend $40 million on the Sportsplex. You know, we, I think we all have agreed that as far as city facilities go, we've got to shore up that fund so that we can upgrade and replace our city facilities as they, as they run down. And, and Stormwater's the, you know, it's the gift that keeps on giving. We're just one, one, one eight-inch rain away from, you know, a lot of, a lot of people being in dire need. And I'm not trying to make fun of it. It's just, it's an issue that we have in the city that's got, it's still got to be addressed over the long run, so.
Just, I want to talk a little bit about next steps. We've talked about everything at a high level. Our Communications Manager is working on updating the pages now. Hopefully, it'll be adopted tonight. So, in the near future, it will all be available online at paduka ky.gov/CommissionPriorities. We'll utilize the same type of reporting structure with quarterly reports and updates. And also, this is really important for us leading into budget season. So, these Commission priorities really feed into as we develop the budget.
Okay. Any questions for Michelle?
Thank you.
Okay, I would ask our City Clerk to read the order, please.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Adopting the City Commission Priorities for Calendar Year 2022," and repealing Municipal Order 2438.
So moved.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have a second municipal order has to do with the acquisition of some permanent right-of-way. Is this a new one? Okay. Rick, you want to come up and tell us about it?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, City Manager. Actually, this is a good segue because we just talked about Stormwater a little bit. And this is out there on Buckner Lane where we're purchasing another piece of right-of-way to make that project successful. We have one more, I think, one or two more to go. And we're opening those bids tomorrow. So, we'll be, we'll be going to work. Recall here, a few weeks or months ago, I said we was going to be bidding some projects with one of those is Buckner Lane, and we're open to that tomorrow. We'll have something on that. And we'll be looking to complete that project by December 31st of this year.
Cool. Any questions for Rick? Okay, City Clerk, you can read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Deed of Conveyance and All Documents Necessary to Acquire a Portion of Real Property Located at 5420 Buckner Lane for Permanent Right-of-Way and Permanent Public Utility and Drainage Easement as Required for the Buckner Lane Bridge Replacement Project."
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two, two ordinances for tonight. The first one is the Build Grant. Perhaps you could read it first, and then we'll let, see if there's questions while Rick's here.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Short Form Agreement with HDR Incorporated in the Amount of $2,39,500 for the Engineering, Design and Construction Administration Services for the FY19 Build Grant." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah authorizes the mayor to execute a short-form agreement with HDR Incorporated in an amount of $2,39,500 for the Engineering, Design and Construction Administration Services for the Build FY19 Grant.
So moved.
Second.
So, this is a $2 million contract for professional services with HDR. Come tell us what that is in terms of the entire project. Maybe just, just kind of lay it out in terms, this is the, 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 the design contract.
Correct, correct. It's the design contract as well as construction administration testing and oversight of the project once you get into construction. So, it's going to be cradle to grave on the entire project. For that. So, initially, you recall that we've, well, we've been working for two years prior to administration. On our NEPA document, you know, go through the environmental process. Now, this next process will be specific design that can be submitted for permitting. And then, we're going to have staged reviews, 30% where Mayor, yourself, and maybe another member of the Commission will be looking at that with the City Manager. And we'll say, okay, here's where we are with the project, and here's how much we think it's going to cost. That's going to be a time when we're going to be looking at maybe saying, okay, we have more desire than we have money. So, we'll, during this process, we'll have multiple meetings through that. And we're going to probably be in the design for about 18 months. We won't be in any construction this year and potentially next summer. We'll be working through the design process for that. This money is $10 million from MIRAD. We have a $1.5 million match from the city. All of our money is going to, going to the design for that.
So, 10 plus one and a half, that's 11 and a half million dollar, and this is two million-ish. Two million of it. You know, for the design services, which is going to leave us nine and a half, if I'm doing the math right, to spend. And as we go through that process, we'll have to decide...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have some, it's just like building a house. We'll have some decisions. We, we, you know, we want this, but we don't have enough money. Or do we want to come up with the money? So, there, there's going to be multiple iterations and community involvement and administration involvement. So, everybody stays aware of where we are. The worst thing that could happen is that we get to the end of the project, we bid the project, and it's $5 million or $2 million more than we anticipated. We want to try to avoid that.
Okay, any questions? Okay. You want to call roll?
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, the next item we have is a consensual annexation of 185 Lyonsden Lane. And we have Nicole Martinez, who would like to make a public comment, so, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. My name is Nicole Martinez Griffin. My husband, Chris Griffin. My son, Emmett. We are excited to bring tenacity and for the potential for this to evolve and grow within the city. So, I just wanted to come up, thank you guys, and make my face and name known to what's going on.
Okay, so I saw you present at Rotary, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, just tell us a little bit about what you're doing, just in case everybody doesn't, doesn't know.
Yeah, so I would say first, I'm most known as Ninja Nicole in the community. So, I competed on American Ninja Warrior. And I opened Tenacity Training in 2018, which was, which, prior to that, I was running out of a CrossFit gym in here, here in town. So, I've been running that in the county. And I'm excited to have purchased this property and to grow and expand what we can do for the community. So, we have camps and classes, and we've probably serviced thousands of people at this point in the four years that I've owned the business.
Okay. That's great. And you're a membership-based? I mean, you, that's, you sell memberships to the, to your gym?
Yep, yep. So, we're a membership-based, monthly memberships for the most part. And then, like I said, we do summer camps and, and all of that. So, we work closely with local schools to try to give kids an opportunity to have healthy, healthy outlets for their lives. And then, my goal with the new expansion and the new building is to be able to bring adults into the picture as well, within the world of ninja and fitness and then some other cool ideas that are brewing, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
And since you're a ninja warrior, you know, if the judge gives me too much trouble, you know, about this annexation, you know, I'm going, I've got a secret defense, so.
She can teach it to run, right?
Thank you for, thank you for all you do. Congratulations.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. You can read that, if you would, City Clerk.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Extending the Boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by Annexing Certain Property Lying Adjacent to the Corporate Limits of the City of Paducah and Defining Accurately the Boundary of Said Property to Be Included Within Said Corporate Limits." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves the consensual annexation of certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 185 Lyonsden Lane, containing approximately 4.639 acres.
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. We have, we're introducing two new ordinances tonight. And they are both zoning text amendments, and they are a bit complex. And so, I'm going to ask Josh to come up and give the Commission an overview, a big-picture overview of the changes that are within this, these text amendments, as best he can. He gave me a little bit of a overview this afternoon, did a great job, so.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Tonight, we have several text amendments I'd like to introduce to you all tonight. These were heard at a public hearing at the Planning Commission on March 7th. The Planning Commission is forwarding a favorable recommendation to this body. The very first one I'd like to talk about is performance standards for single-family and two-family homes. Currently, we have several requests for people to live in RVs, campers, barns, sheds, that sort of thing, kind of structures that keeps neighborhoods in decline whenever they should be living in a standard house, mobile home, manufactured home, or mobile home. And also, we are introducing a text amendment for towing and wrecker services, which we don't have currently, although we have several in the city. Those are proposed to be located in the M1 Light Industrial Zone, which I'll talk about more in depth here in a few minutes. The second thing is our planned unit developments. We have three major changes that are proposed to those. The first is that, right now, as written, planned unit developments have to make two trips before the Paducah Planning Commission. They have to have a development phase and then a final phase. We are proposing to make it just one submittal to the Planning Commission, which saves a developer a month in development review time. And that's a scheme that Hopkinsville, Owensboro, and Bowling Green utilizes, and we would like to come in line with that. Further, if a development is in line with the underlying zone, we can approve it as staff through our regular site plan submittal process, just like any other site in the city. However, if it does not meet that underlying zone, it would still go to the Paducah Planning Commission for a public hearing. And finally, we hope that we can modify the size of planned unit developments to smaller tracts of property. This would be beneficial throughout the city, but we hope on the North Side and South Side, because developers wouldn't have to invest so much in construction cost, infrastructure cost, and that sort of thing, we can get a more compact, dense development, which would increase housing choice and also development density.
So, when you say density, it's like two small houses can be built on the same, on one lot, you know, as, and, and that's a change from before.
Right. Preferably multifamily in that case, but it could be individual homes, especially like cottage homes, which we do allow in our zoning ordinance, to be allowed on one lot. So, with that happening, there's not as much infrastructure that has to be extended and that sort of thing. So, it's more beneficial and economical for developers to do that. So, we're making that change because in our largest planned unit development, to just establish it is 10 acres. And we simply don't have that in the urban fabric of Paducah in most cases.
Josh, did you mention that part, Section 126-97 cryptocurrency mining?
Haven't got there yet.
Oh, you're still working to get there? Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson, I thank you for that, and thank you for helping me to hurry along.
Hurry along, Josh. Speed it up.
The third one is qualified manufactured homes. Currently, those are regulated by KRS 100.348. And this text amendment will bring us into compliance with that state statute. What that allows is the local government to look at compatibility standards for manufactured homes that are located outside of a manufactured home park in a residential zone. They can only be single-family, but we have the ability to take a look at the structures around them to make sure they're going to fit within the neighborhood. Currently, as written in the zoning ordinance, there's not a standard to go by as far as multifamily warehouses, industrial. We have to look at whatever's around it. This text amendment would tailor that to just single-family. That way, we're comparing apples to apples in this case. Thirdly, or fourthly, and it's just a simple change to, in our onings and canopy permitting, going from Fire Prevention Division to the Department of, or to the Fire Prevention Division, now cryptocurrency mining. And this is exciting to me because I love to come before the Commission and explain new land uses and how they can affect the city of Paducah. But cryptocurrency mining, as you all know, is from coast to coast booming right now. So, of course, we have several in Paducah and at least one in McCracken County, or together. And we devise this text amendment by utilizing other places in the country, such as Moses Lake, Washington, Leavenworth, Washington, and Missoula County, Montana. And what we are proposing is for cryptocurrency mining to be allowed in the B3 general business zone, however, not in a building to exceed 105,000 square feet. Where that figure comes from is the AmerisourceBargain Building that we already have a cryptocurrency mining going into now. And we would like to keep our commercial zones, B3 and Highway Business Zone, available for recreational uses, for retail uses, restaurant uses, where it's not totally taken over by cryptocurrency mining. And of course, those types of uses contributes to payroll tax, property tax, transit room tax, the economic engine of the city of Paducah. We are also proposing them in the M1 Light Industrial Zone, M2 Heavy Density Industrial Zone, and M3 High Density Industrial Zone by right. And these can be either inside or outside of a building, and it also includes server farms, ancillary equipment, and stuff like that. And because we already allow outside storage in these industrial zones, we feel that cryptocurrency mining would be a good fit for those zones. We're also proposing them in the Planned Office Park with some performance standards. They do have to be located 500 feet away from any residentially zoned property in either the city or the county. And they also have to install a vegetative screen around the property lines of their property to keep the character of the Planned Office Park intact. So, next is accessory dwelling units. And for this text amendment, we utilized Louisville, Boone County, Bowling Green, and Lexington. And you all have heard a lot of terminology for these, granny flats, mother-in-law suites, and the whole, the whole gamut of terminology out there. What we're proposing is for an accessory dwelling unit, or what we call an ADU for short, to be located on one lot with one single-family dwelling. It can be located in the rear yard with up to 50% of the rear yard, but not to exceed with up to 50% of the rear yard, but not to exceed the ground floor area of the home. They do have to meet the setbacks, which is normally 25 feet in the back and six or eight feet on the sides, but it does not have to be a lot that maintains lot width or area standards. It can be, if there's a single-family home on it, we would allow it. The maximum height of accessory dwelling units cannot exceed the principal structure. They do have to provide one additional parking space. And accessory dwelling units could be utilized as a short-term rental within the Paducah zoning ordinance. However, there might be other things that would come into play. For example, for a special event short-term rental, they would have to be in an R1 low-density residential zone, but if they're in an R3 or an R2 zone, they would have to get a conditional use permit. The other thing that's coming up next is medium-density residential zone. That's the simplest, and it's just for readability. And then the very last thing on this text amendment is to introduce towing and wrecker services to the M1 light industrial zone. And as I mentioned before, that's because of outside storage that they have of the vehicles, which would be most appropriate in those types of zones as opposed to commercial zones. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Did you go over both text amendments?
No, you signed separate.
Okay.
I'll have to get with you later for my tutorial.
Yes, sir.
It's a lot of information. It's a lot of information, so.
Can I get your Cliff Notes then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 126 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah Related to Definitions Planned Unit Development, Qualified Manufactured Homes, Awnings and Canopies, Cryptocurrency Mining, Accessory Dwelling Unit, ADU, Medium Density Residential Zone, and Light Industry Zone." This ordinance summarizes as follows: "This ordinance amends Sections 126-3 definitions, Section 12670 planned unit development, Section 126-79 qualified manufactured homes, Section 12685 awnings and canopies, Section 12697 cryptocurrency mining, Section 12698 accessory dwelling unit, ADU, Section 126-104 medium-density residential zone, R3, and Section 126-110 light industry zone, M1, of the City of Paducah zoning ordinance." Said amendments were heard by the Paducah Planning Commission at a public hearing on March 7, 2022, and forwarded to the City Commission with the recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Oh, no.
First read, sorry.
Okay, second texting amendment. Thank you, Mayor. The second one is a complete revision of our sign code. And the reason why it's a standalone text amendment is because we are completely repealing and replacing our sign code. What is a major change to this is we're going from 22 pages of sign code down to 13. It's going to be a lot easier for developers to find what they're needing. So, some efficiency there. Secondly, because there's a Supreme Court case, which is Reed versus Town of Gilbert, we cannot regulate signage based on content because that's a violation of the First Amendment. So we utilized a model Kentucky League of Cities ordinance to develop our sign code, which is content neutral. And thirdly, what we have done is we've grouped together our mixed-use and residential signs, our professional, commercial, and industrial signs, and our historic zone signs. That way, it's standardized across those zones. Literally, you had developers happen to search through every zone in the city to figure out what type of sign is allowed, their standards, and then apply for a permit. This will make it much easier for developers to apply for signage permits in that aspect. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
Is there any significant changes in terms of restrictions, or, I mean, from, from what we've been doing in the past to this amendment?
The, the major change is the content neutrality, where we're not going to be reading signs to determine if they're in compliance or not. We're going to be looking at the size, the shape, the time limit, the things that the federal law still allows us to regulate.
What about current signage?
It'll be grandfathered in until they replace it. Several times, we, when a sign is replaced, they have to get a new permit downstairs in fire prevention, and that'll trigger the new sign code unless they apply for a variance or something of that nature.
Do we know where every sign in the city of Paducah is?
No, Mayor, I don't. Just want to make sure. We need to have some database of signs, you know, that...
Sounds like a good project for you.
Yeah. I've got plenty of them, Mayor.
Sounds like lyrics to a song. Signs, signs everywhere, there's signs.
Okay, you want to read the, the ordinance? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Mayor.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Section 126-76 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah Related to Sign Regulations in Its Entirety." This ordinance is summarized as follows: "This ordinance repeals and replaces Section 126-76 sign regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah in its entirety in order to standardize sign sizes in residential, historic, and commercial industrial zones. Said changes were heard by the Paducah Planning Commission at a public hearing on March 7, 2022, and forwarded to the City Commission with the recommendation of approval."
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have two discussion items on the agenda for tonight, and they're, they're interrelated in some form or fashion, but I'm going to let our city manager kind of walk us through where we are.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioner, as you may recall, several meetings ago, we had a presentation to you in regards to a couple of options for moving forward with the Cherry Civic Center renovation. And part of that discussion outlined two options that, that came forward for consideration in relationship to feedback of looking at, of, you know, past history of the usage of the facility, and then also some community stakeholder engagement. And Jeff Cantor is here to kind of walk us through again on that, to give us a little bit of, some updated on those designs. What we would ask for your consideration this evening after hearing Jeff's update and showing of this is allowing us to move forward with a direction, so we can put an RFP out on the street. And so we wanted Jeff to kind of, to, to give us the overview again about where we stood and kind of show visually, you know, the two options that we explored last time, but also some different configurations. You may recall that last time, we, we showed a configuration with open space, but we also wanted you to get a sense of what a fully utilized space looked like and not having the open space there. So Jeff?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. What we want to do tonight is just revisit this. We've had, I think, about six weeks to kind of think through this and stew on it. So, what you're seeing now on the screen is Option A, which is renovation only. This is where we started. This is what the feasibility study that was completed last summer was pointing towards. This is what the, the whole project was about initially. And so, until we started hearing from stakeholders, and that's where we developed Option B as a result of that. Option A here is you're looking at a configuration with round tables in the back third, which would be the north plan right of the, of the floor plan you're looking at, would be reserved for parks administration offices. And so, we, we met with Amy and her staff and determined what they need to function, both now and future, looking forward to the future. And, and so what you're seeing here is about 128 seats around, round banquet tables, eight seats per table. This is matching the size of the tables that the city currently owns and uses in the Civic Center, as, as, as it currently functions. So, so this, this is a reduction of what obviously the capacity is currently. We, we were asked within the last week or so to, you know, what would the seating capacity be if we filled in that central core there? We, one of the things we heard in the stakeholder meetings was that when we showed them some of these, you know, early concepts, was just, it was filled with tables. But then we kept hearing about, well, where's the dance floor? There's no room for dancing. And, and several of the events from, from Apa Kappa, Apa, Kappa, Alpha Kappa, Alpha, I mess that up every time.
AKA.
AKA. You know, and, and, you know, the Martin Luther King events, you know, wedding receptions, was that dance floors are needed. And that's something that, that is, that we didn't think about. And so, we, we created a concept that filled in the central area here, and I don't know if you have it on the screen, Lindsay. Yes. So, oh, good, it's on the computer. I can read that. I cannot read that TV over there. So, so this is 168 seats. So this gets us a little closer to some of the capacities we were hearing, some of the, you know, one of the things we heard from the stakeholder groups is what their average attendance was per event. And that was in anywhere from, you know, 150 up to 250 people, depending on the events. And of course, these were all pre-COVID numbers. And so, you know, nothing has been held in the Civic Center for, for about two years now. So, one of the things we heard from, from several of the stakeholders was that rectangular tables provide a greater seating capacity. They're a little more efficient. So we looked at that. We, we measured tables. We, and so we created a layout that has rectangular tables. And so, if we can look at that option, okay. So, so this is, again, Option A, renovation only. This is about 160 seats. And so you can see the increase from 128 to 160 seats just based on the, the shape of the table. And so this gets us, again, in the ballpark of, of some of the lower-end capacities of events that were being held there. And then again, filling in the central core, central area of the floor with rectangular tables, we were able to, to increase the seating capacity up to about 256, which gets us right at some of those higher numbers that we were seeing. The downside is there's no dance floor. There, there's no area for, for, for dancing. There, there's no area for a stage. There's no area for a band or anything like that. But we are now, you know, reaching the capacities that, that were mentioned in the stakeholder meetings. So that's renovation only. So we looked, and at the last meeting that I was here on February 8th, we looked at Option B, which would be a, a small, approximately 1,260 square foot addition on the north side of the building, plan right, there in the, in the rear parking lot, to accommodate about half or a little over half of the office space. And what this did was that it opened up the assembly area to, to maintain more of the assembly space as it currently operates. The stage that's in there now is 12 feet deep, and it's about 25 feet wide. And, and so what you're looking at on the floor plan here, the, the wall of the offices that's in the assembly space is about three feet out further than the front of the stage. So, so just for kind of scale purposes. So, so this plan gets us up to about 352 seats around rectangular tables. Again, this is not, you know, does not allow for any dancing or, or stage or anything like that, but the, the seating capacity without these central tables is still up in the range of, oh goodness, let me think. I don't know if we have that on here or not, 224 seats. So even without the central tables, with a, a full central dance floor, we're, we're getting close to that number of 250 that we were hearing was, was about the max capacity that, that folks were having events for. So, you know, we, we looked at options with, with chairs only. You know, this, this occurs, several of the stakeholders we heard from do have events that are chairs only, and it does create opportunities for, for community events, public engagement events, lectures, things like that. And so, you know, the, we tried throughout this whole process to, to be, to honor the feasibility study, to, to honor the folks that use it, you know, with the stakeholder engagement, which was just extremely enlightening to, to me. And to hear, to hear some of the stories of events that have happened in this building through the 70 years that it's existed, it, it is, you know, Google doesn't have much on the Cherry Civic Center history, and I've tried. And so I'm, I'm relying on word of mouth. And several of the stakeholders, I asked specifically if they could compile a list of events and, and maybe artists who have even performed here, because Ike and Tina Turner were, were two of them that they mentioned, which is incredible. And so, you know, we, we want to honor the, the history of the building. We want to honor its, its users, the folks that use it most historically and in the future, but we want to provide a, a space that will, that will serve the community for another generation or two. And so, you know, we just, we want to get this right. We as our firm, and I think, I think we as the city, we just want to get this right. And we want to help you do that and make the best decisions possible. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. If there's something I left out, I'd, you know, be more than willing to fill in the gaps.
Jeff, would you remind the commission about estimated, I know we haven't, you know, until we do an RFP and get something back in, what we're looking at in relationship to, originally, the study was about 1.2, but with, with increases since then, about what we're looking at estimated-wise on both options?
Yeah, yeah. So, so we've looked at some opinions of costs, and this is not taking into account contractor fees, you know, things like that. This is just construction cost. What were the, the numbers, our opinions of the cost at this point, and this is, again, these numbers are six weeks old. So, you know, we, we know what the market is. Option A, what was a total, including a 10% escalation number for, for just such an occasion as this, where we have some delay in, in project, and a 10% contingency was, was 1.55 million dollars. And so that, that is up from the feasibility study of, of, you know, a year and a half ago, or nine months ago now. Option B was a, was, including those same escalation and contingency numbers, was 1.8 million dollars. And so about $300,000 increase to Option B, which would be the addition, which is, you know, if you run the numbers out, you know, $300,000 divided by 1,240 square feet, you know, it's, it, it flushes out to about what we're seeing in square foot costs. It may be a little higher because it's just a smaller building. The smaller the, the building or addition, the higher the numbers are, just because that's the way it runs. So, so those are the costs as of, you know, our best guesses six weeks ago.
Jeff, when I, when I look through here with your stakeholder engagement meetings, it looks to me like almost every event could fit under the Option 1. And even with Option 1, if you, the rectangular tables, so there's about 16 there, if you just took like two rows in the center out, you could put a dance floor in there and only reduce it, you could still have over 200 people, 225 to 240. I just don't, I just don't see any of the stakeholders that were asking really for more than that. I mean, I know the blood drive is one that has more people, but it's kind of a come and go event. Big Ed, when he does Thanksgiving, it's kind of a come and go event. There aren't, you know, hundreds of people there at one time. There was one credit union that they just used chairs, no tables. Even one of the leading wedding planners and, and does all of that, her wedding receptions and parties, to me, would fit under Option 1.
They could.
I guess I'm asking that question. I mean, that's how I'm reading it.
I'll add to that. I had a conversation with Amy this week, and, and she was telling me about the conversation she had with Rosia, you know.
That's who I'm talking about.
And, and, you know, she, Rosia said that magic number was, as I recall, 200, you know, which I feel like, you know, we can accommodate, you know, with Option 1. know, which I feel like, you know, we can accommodate, you know, with option one.
Well, option one, even if you took three rows, 32 chairs out, you're still at 224, if you added, to add in a dance floor. And I understand that part, but you're not going to use, I wouldn't think, more than that.
Right.
For it. I guess that Rosia was one I was studying in particular, because I know she does quite a few things there.
One of the things that, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I was, I was gonna say, one of the, one agency that you wouldn't be able to accommodate would be the NAACP, Martin Luther King Luncheon. None of those things would, they would be hindered, you know. So, how do we?
Well, they do have, they show a range here. I was reading JW's comments about 2 to 400.
Right.
So, I mean, we could, they could absolutely do the 250, 250, 256 if they're at that.
Absolutely. And those are large events. Those, those are pretty large events.
I mean, we all attended one that was held at one of the church fellowships hall that was very nicely done.
Actually, I think, as, you know, sort of the feeling I got, I mean, I don't know where they'd end up going, but I mean, I think they were very happy with being over at First Baptist, you know, and, and seemed to be, I mean, it's not the same, because it is somebody else's property, rather than the city, you know. But, you know, my concern is, is building a building, you know, for, you know, the larger building, and I said this six weeks ago, whenever, you know, building the larger building for, you know, a limited number of events. And then, I'm also concerned about the fact that we don't know, we don't know what the cost is going to be. And we do have a limited amount of funds, you know, that we're managing. You know, maybe, city manager, you want to walk through, you know, sort of our fund allocation that we're kind of dealing with, you know, which I think is part of this equation.
Yeah, Mayor, so, you know, Commissioner, you'll recall that you had previously discussed having the opportunity to use some of the ARPA funding for this, without having to find new money. That is one-time money that this would be an eligible expense, especially under the revised final rule of the feds. You could also, you know, reallocate some of your bond funding for this project, and some of the previously talked about or discussed options for bond funding that would now follow under ARPA. It's a little bit of, you know, of a shell game there. But, you know, we, we looked at those two pots of money instead of trying to, to try to find new money, or go borrow new money for this. Of course, if you did decide to look at the, the bond funding pool, you are, you know, you have that money, and it is borrowing, that's paying back. The ARPA funding, I think, is the better utilization for this project, because it is one-time money. You're doing an investment in an existing structure that you have, and, you know, not to have reoccurring additional cost on that, where you're not having to pay that money back. And so, you know, my recommendation is we talk about this, and have a, a dialogue about which project or which option to move forward through. I would, I would, you know, consider that the ARPA funding is probably the, the primary source of revenue for this project. Within that confines, you had six, a little more than 6.4 million dollars allocated on, from, from ARPA. We received half of it last year. We anticipate receiving the other half, or the other tranche of that, coming in June or July of this year. So, there's, of that 3.2 that we received, 4 million has been allocated toward Stormwater already. And then, if we took, you know, a portion of that for this project, whatever that came in, then that would, you know, reduce the amount available for other projects.
Well, even before the convention center was closed, a couple of NAACP events were held at other locations. I remember Walker Hall, attending a couple there. You know, I, I know you only met, not with nine, but these are really good representation from a church, a wedding caterer, the NAACP, some props, some businesses. And, and the only one that I feel like we can't meet all the time, we can meet some of the time, is the NAACP, when they have a, maybe a sold-out event of more than 200 or 250. However, I do know that they have used other locations. I've, I've noticed that they've sold sponsorships to help them to offset some of that cost. So, I don't, is it, you know, worth 250, $300,000 more in the cost, risking whether or not we could pay for it at the higher level, when, when we know that we might be able to help them on those events that are just so much larger than what they could fit in here? To me, when I look at it, everything else is gonna, would work.
That's how I feel as well.
And I mean, I go back to why we, we put the, the offices in there. Now, it's not fitting, so it's just, it's like we're going back on some of the stuff that we first, the reason we were putting the offices in there is we didn't need it. Now, if we're gonna have to build onto it, and we just can't, I, I just don't know about doing something for just one or two.
Well, I, I think if you look back, I think when, conceptually, when we were talking about redoing it, we didn't think that the, we didn't think it would, we would be able to get this much space. And what we found, as I recall, was Parks was not going to need as many, as many offices as what we thought. So, what we've done is, you know, through that process, we've identified, you know, more space, you know, and...
It's larger than we originally thought it was gonna be.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Which, which does help, I think.
I mean, I, go ahead. I don't want to disav, I don't want to disadvantage the NAACP. I don't want to disadvantage anybody, you know, really, for, I mean, I think it's going to be a very, very much improved space.
Yes, that's what I was getting at.
Where people, people are really going to enjoy, and it's going to be much more user-friendly. I just struggle, you know, with spending the, the extra 300 to 350, you know, estimated.
Yes.
Because we don't, because we don't know what it's going to be, you know, for, for those, for those events, especially if there's opportunities for them to be comfortable and happy somewhere else.
So, so if we get to them, the NAACP, and they need more space. First of all, the question that I would ask is that if the space is not available, do you think, there are some people who will not participate in that function, so it never has the opportunity to grow or to reach its potential? That's number one. The second thing, that, what kind of support are we willing to give the NAACP to go somewhere else? And if we give something to the NAACP to go somewhere else, are we going to give the next organization money, or whatever we say we're going to give, to go somewhere else? So, that's, you know, so.
I want to accommodate them as much as we can. I, I think they had already used a lot of some other spaces. I, I think, I've, as someone who helps plan events all the time, I thought this NAACP, their most recent NAACP banquet was so well-done, and, and I loved their stage, and I've complimented the way that they did everything. Now, I don't know how many people they had.
I don't know what the...
In there, but that banquet room at First Baptist, I know holds a lot. So, and I know that they have usually two events a year, maybe three. They have the MLK luncheon.
Well, one of the events that we have is the 8th of August. And the 8th of August is where the dancing, those kinds of things take place. So, you know, so if we're gonna, I think if we're gonna do for one, and we're gonna kind of be pushed to do the same thing, or the same kinds of things for others that may come, and not having an extra space may hinder growth of future activities that they have. That's, you know, but I understand what you're saying. It's about spending the extra $300,000. I, I get that, I get it. But I just want us to think about that as well.
Well, the way we would...
I didn't say anything.
The way we would support, the way we would support the NAACP is, is through, we have in the past, and we will in the future, is through sponsorship. You know, we could, it could even be an enhanced sponsorship, you know, as part of this. And, I mean, my sense of looking at this is the number of events where you would bust over that is very limited. And so, if we needed to do sponsorships to help, and treat, treat one and all the same, if we needed to provide sponsorships to help them find that larger space, we would be better off, and more economically...
Sure, I get it.
To do that.
Absolutely.
And I, and, you know, and I'd, I'd be for that.
I just want us to know it's coming. And when I say it's coming, I mean, we all know that what you do for one, and someone else is going to come up and say, well, you did it for them, so why don't you do the same thing for us? And then you, then you're gonna be, we're gonna be accused of favoritism, it's gonna be, it happens to be predominantly, you know, African-American, and we're gonna be accused of, you know, we didn't do, you know. So, I think, I think you get what I'm saying.
I do.
Well, I'm kind of confused on that, what you think. What you're saying, that we do what we do for one, we do for the other. So, what are you saying we're gonna do for one that we're not doing for the other?
I'm saying, we said that we would help the NAACP if they had a group larger than...
Okay, by help, I mean, new sponsorships, helping, helping them identify new sponsorships that maybe they haven't done in the past, helping with the location. I didn't necessarily mean...
Financially.
Financial support that we would provide them, we wouldn't provide for others.
Okay, whatever it is, if it's financial support, sponsorships, I think that we ought to be in a position to offer the same kinds of things to other groups that may come and say, this is what I need.
I understand what Ray's saying.
I, I do too, but I do look at some things that we would do with the NAACP as a sponsorship that we might not do with a church, or a private reception, or another event, that's going to be looked at differently. And, and that's something I think that the city would be, we have been. We've done sponsorships for Martin Luther King Day, for all of those others, 8th of August, I personally have done some, those are things that we've done sponsorships for. Others, events that were on here, we haven't. So, I, I think, I know what you're saying about what we would do for one, we would do for all, but at the same time, somewhere, we're going to be looked at differently.
I'm, I'm with you.
Different kinds of organizations, different kinds of events.
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I just threw my thought at it.
Right. I think...
I mean, I get you.
I think we would, we would do everything in our power to accommodate, you know, to help, if, if, if we had a space that, that just wasn't going to accommodate, then I think we'd, you know, and it had been one of these groups that had traditionally used it in the past, in particular, you know, and they were looking for a larger space. We'd do everything in our power to try to find them the right spot, find them sponsors, you know, which is something that I actually have done the last, you know, the last year, you know, as people have looked for, you know, I had somebody contact me about a dance, you know, I called around, worked out some, worked out some situations, negotiated some pricing. So, I mean, I think that's something that we would continue to do.
Right. I, I took it that where you were going, and I thought I missed something, that there are places that could seat 400 to 500 people. Okay, we need that, so we can't do this, so the city's gonna pay the difference. And, and that's where I thought you were going with that. And, and again, when we talk about, you know, helping, that was not clearly defined what we meant by helping.
Yeah, I did, okay, okay.
And, and the mayor clarified that by saying sponsorships, and, you know, and that.
Okay.
I see, you know, the WC Young Center, maybe that they might have something with 300 tables and chairs, we're pretty close.
Would that be the 8th of August, maybe?
Probably, yes. That, so that's the one event during the year that they might have, that they might not be able to fit in there. But, you know, let me, I, I would just throw this out, you know, like Frankfurt right now does have, has very limited convention space. And I know one of their convention centers, they, they rent a tent and put it up outside to have the overflow crowd. Would that even be a possibility for something like that, where you would have more tables and chairs? I guess it would take up some of the parking lot. But, I mean, there are creative ways, and I think that we could do it, but that, like, that's one, of course, Big Ed, we've talked about that, but I think that's a come and go event. The NAACP, helping them with the couple of, the several events they have a year. They said, what is the frequency of the event that has 2 to 400? And it says, once a year. So, you know, they do, I, should we, I guess it comes down, how much more should we do for a couple, how many more events? I'm just based on the responses that you got from some of the key users.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and, and we're, we're not a proponent of either. I mean, honestly, our fee doesn't change, whether we go one way or the other. So, I'm not pushing a larger one because our fee goes up, that's not the case at all. I just, you know, I just want, we want to equip you to make the best decision possible for the, for the community.
It's one of those hard decisions, you know, that, you know, we, you know, we need to make. I mean, it's, it's, it's ARPA money, it's, it's bond money, it's taxpayer money. I mean, depending, no matter where it comes from, you know, we just need to make the, the wisest decision that we can with the, you know, the money. And, you know, I, I feel like that option A, I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb here. I think, I think option A, you know, will accommodate the vast majority of events, and I think we can work through, I think we can work through the other events that occur, and, you know, and, and we're still 12 to 18, we're 18 months away from, you know, from getting there anyway, or 24, you know. So, COVID's changed a lot of things. I mean, it's not going to change the fact that people, you know, want to get together, but, but it certainly has changed the size of events. I mean, it's, it's, it's been, but, it's a lot of factors.
And it's going to be so much nicer. I was looking at some of the negative comments, the bathrooms, the kitchens, I mean, it's gonna be...
I'm just ready for us to get it back open.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I don't think anybody disagrees that it needs attention. I mean, not us, but stakeholders, as I read all of those, they pretty much were the same comments, all for it.
Yeah, it, it would appear that I copy and pasted a lot of the answers, but I did not. I just, I found that to be, it was just, you know, affordable.
Right.
Needs an update, and, yeah, so it's...
And change is always difficult. But, once we kind of get in it...
It is.
Get about all the hard stuff.
Yep.
Well, again, the, the, the method of bringing this forward tonight is, and because you mentioned, you know, we are, you know, the longer we delay a decision in a direction on RFPs, the longer that it takes to get the facility back in public use. And so, you know, if the commission is ready to give direction tonight, we would ask, you know, for a motion to be made, which direction to go, and so, we can let Jeff and his team move forward with the RFP process.
Can I make a motion for option A? Or do you just have to come from that?
No.
I'm making a motion that we go with option A.
I'll second that.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
We'll get started this week, or ramp back up this week.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for your work so far.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item for discussion is, is a, is a, is a discussion around ARPA funds. City managers talked a little bit about ARPA funds. We had 2.4 million, we had $2.4 million left in ARPA funds, out of the original 6.4. Some of that's going to be used, you know, for the Civic Center, based upon our last vote. There, I think, in discussions with the city manager, we have discussed the possibility of taking an amount of those funds, and I think the city manager has proposed...
Talking about for our facilities, or for?
For the, no, I'm talking about for the... For the, no, I'm talking about for the, for the...
Community.
Community.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. 200,000 of, yeah. So, so Mayor, you're 6.4, and then the 4 million, just recall, commission already allocated to Storm, so that leaves roughly 2.4 unallocated money from the ARPA. And then if you took 200,000 of that to set aside for community investment in community organizations...
Call it special grants, I mean, you know...
Yeah, we have the, you know, we have the, the grant and aid program, it's something modeled after that, it would be definitely different from that, it would open up, it is an eligible expense under the final rule from the Fed. And then so, you know, looking at that, and, you know, for a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, you could allocate that one lump sum, you could allocate that into multiple projects, but there would be an application process for it to come back and, and vet on that. You know, and, in looking at, coming up to that, that amount, I was thinking about the Cherry Civic Center, you know, option A, estimated cost of 1.5, you know, once we get into it, we may be a little bit over that, and so if you just had a little bit of a cushion there, and said 1.8, then you have 400,000 left of that, and one thing...
After the 200.
After the 200, yeah, take the 200 for those community special grants, 1.8 towards the Cherry Civic Center, still leaves you 400,000. And then looking at our priorities and continuing priorities for stabilizing and a pull of money, and for our facilities improvement of allocating that 400,000 into the current year, fiscal year, 200,000 that was put in there, that would give us 600, working towards a goal of getting a million dollars into that fund, so we could actually do some facility improvements.
Yeah, now, so go, just explain that fund again.
Sure.
You know, so that, just, 'cause, so we're all clear, what you're talking about.
Sure, yeah. So if you recall, the Facilities Improvement Fund, you're just trying to build that up similar to the fund that was previously established for vehicles, and it's a, you know, it's a fund that gets bounced up, and we, you know, charge it out back to the departments that use it. So basically, we're acting as our, we, we seed it, and then we act as our own bank to save money, so we don't have to go out and continuously borrow on it. So the thought process was previously set up to establish Facilities Fund in that same way that the Vehicle Fleet Fund was established on that. And so this year, in the current fiscal year, you previously voted in the budget process to put 200,000 towards that. 200,000 doesn't address anywhere near the needs that are there, doesn't really get us the opportunity to do hardly anything with that. So looking at, you know, roughly 6 to 8 million dollars in needed facility improvement needs from deferred maintenance over the years, felt that, and in conversation with the team, that if we could get to a million dollars in that facility fund, that would seed it well enough in advance to get us moving forward and to make some, some real improvement into our facilities. And so thinking about that 1 million dollar as the target amount to get there, 200 in the current fiscal year, if we can take 400 out of this ARPA, that gets us to 6. And we believe that there's gonna be an opportunity in some unrealized, or unexpected revenue in our budget from cost savings, and then just some, some revenue that's coming in to take another 400,000, and that would get us to that 1 million dollar before the end of this fiscal year of allocated dollars in there.
But realistically, 1 million dollars is still pretty far away from where we have to be eventually, right? To accomplish our goals.
And we would, yeah, yeah, in subsequent years, we would still seed money into that to keep it up, but then we would also have money coming back in from charging out to the departments to replenish that.
Do you know how much money we have in the vehicle fund? Do you know what that number is?
Not right off the top of my head, I'm looking back at Michelle. No, 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 that's fine. I, I wasn't expecting that one.
Sorry.
I'm sure if John was here, he would...
I'm sure he would too, yeah.
I'd just rattle that one off. But that has been a very, it's proved to be a very wise decision from previous decision-making to get us there, and that has been a cost savings over the year for, by acting literally as your own bank on that, and it's been able to save money, and as it's paid back in, it continues to.
Yeah, that's, that's a, I, I think that's something that's, you know, we won't, we won't, we, we're not gonna achieve that goal in, in the next year, two years, I mean, that's, that's gonna be something we have to keep working at, but we really have to figure out a way to, you know, to, to save money to improve our facilities, and to replace our facilities when they're gone, you know, and be able to build a new one.
We've been kicking the can.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So...
So with that outline, if you, again, just to walk back through, you know, our existing ARPA funds for the 6.4 have been allocated, leaving us 2.4. If the commission is agreeable of setting aside 200,000 for community grants, then that leaves us the 2.2. If you did, based on unknown cost for the Cherry Civic Center, if you looked at 1.8 as a benchmark there of the ARPA funds, that leaves you the 400,000 then to be put into the Facilities Improvement Fund.
So, are we voting on this? 'Cause I also kind of want some of this to be held during budget discussions, 'cause I know that there are a couple of requests out there to the city for help with the historical places, with economic development, that I'm not sure that leaves any kind of money here for.
So, yeah, I mean, this, no, you don't have to vote on it to solidify that. I would, would ask for the, the consideration of making the determination if we are gonna use these ARPA monies for the Cherry Civic Center, 'cause we need to, moving forward, we need to know what out of these funds is gonna be available for that.
Well, I would think that vote says, yes, we're moving forward with the 1.8 for that.
And then once we get the RFP back in, also, we would know, you know, what that number may be, and hopefully it's not that, and we would have some additional revenue, but the, the process for allocating the ARPA funds, you took the first process, part of that in your consent agenda earlier this evening, which is allowing, is taking the standard allowance for local fiscal recovery. That was a change in the federal final rule that allowed us to do that, because our receipts under that was less than 10 million dollars, then we could do that authorization on that. However, as we go to spend those monies, we will have to file those, those documents in for the threshold, or the, the allocation areas that they apply to. So, so no, Commissioner, your point, you don't have to tonight physically say that, but I would, would ask for some direction, especially for the Cherry Civic Center, to make an allocation of that, so we have that funding locked in, and we don't overexpend.
I think you have that.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, from this group, I think you have that. Is there really, there's probably, to Commissioner Wilson's point, there's no downside to waiting on the ARPA? Is there a downside to waiting on the, on the remaining ARPA funds until we walk through the budget process?
Yeah, for another two, three weeks. No, 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 that's, there's, there's not on that, I mean, we're still well within the timeframe of making those, those draws and...
I mean, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about, you know, in terms of, you know, budget discussions, and where you want to...
Well, I, I mean, ARPA funds is one thing, so when we start talking about the 23 budget, we'll be starting about, talking about allocations. I know you've had some groups come to you, I've had some to me. Some are economic development-related, some are culture, interest preserve, preserving some arts and culture, historical locations, that I think should, we should be considered. If we're, if, if we're gonna look at that in the 23 budget, that's fine. I just wanna leave some leeway for discussions on some other things that have come in, that I think we should be looking to how we could maybe support.
Yeah, I like it. And, and that investment fund that we have, you know, does have some, has, you know, that's the historical platform that that's used for some of those things, and we are beginning those conversations within that confines as well.
So there may be other plots that we could pull from for those, I just don't wanna lock them out.
Sure. Again, you know, as long as, and it doesn't require an official action to, to vote on, on those expenditures of those funds at this time, but just knowing that, you know, we would have, using that benchmark of 1.8 out of that 2.4, that gives us some area to work on.
Okay, so we're gonna kick this can down the road a little bit?
Well, I think we're just holding it, I think that it's out there, that we're gonna look at it. We're not kicking the, when you say 1.8, you're talking about the Civic Center holding 1.8 instead of just the 1.5 something?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have a little bit extra, we're anticipating installation.
Cost, right.
How long will it take us to get the, the bids back? Would you estimate?
We estimated 10 to 12 weeks for construction documents. That was six weeks ago, so it's, that, that hasn't changed. Probably need four to six weeks to get to solicit bids and get something before the commission for approval.
Okay.
So, six months.
So six weeks to get something back in, and, and for consideration?
Yep, after drawings are complete.
After drawings are complete, yeah.
That's why I was just gonna comment, you're going 1.8, I'm looking down here, I like the 1.2 better, so we're going.
I, I like that number better too, because it, to the commissioners, quite, you know, that does free up some of those additional numbers, I'm just trying to be a realist there. I'd rather, I'd rather have...
That it's set, doesn't mean it needs to be spent.
Right, exactly.
If you wanna spend...
Right, but I'd rather...
You're gonna say you're gonna buy, you know, yeah.
Yeah, well, and also, but also don't wanna scrambling to looking for funds at the last minute, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, you know, let's continue the discussion with ARPA funds, and, and as it relates, we can talk about this at another commission meeting, but bond funds, we got X amount of bond funds, you know, we've got a timer on that, you know, that we've gotta, to allocate those things and spend them, and so we're on top of that.
To start activating, yes.
Okay.
And Jeff, while you're here, how big is the Civic Center? Again, is it 6,000, or better than 6?
I'm sorry, let me put you on that.
It says in here, 6,000 square feet.
Well, I believe that the total Civic Center square footage is 9,377 square feet. With the renovation-only option, we're at about 4,500 square feet for the assembly portion, which would, and that includes...
Yeah, I get it, I didn't mean to get a whole nother, I was just, I was doing my that square foot, and I was just working a few things in my...
I got you, alright.
Thank you.
We all good on that discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, any comments from city manager?
No, sir.
Okay, any comments from commissioners?
Sure.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I would entertain a motion.
You need to...
Stop it.
Oh, I thought you were doing...
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Didn't think you could do that, but you just did it.